Okay, well, a very, very warm good afternoon to all of you on behalf of Federation of Indian Women Entrepreneurs. My name is Deepa Sayal and I'm very fortunate to introduce the founding president of Federation of Indian Women Entrepreneurs, Dr. Rajni Agarwal. She has been this seasoned entrepreneur who's done several initiatives and lots of work in women entrepreneurs. She has won meritorious awards and also won a medal from the president for her extensive work. So I'll not wait any longer. Well, back at you, Dr. Rajni Agarwal.
Thank you very much, Deepa. Thanks for inviting me. Well, it's a great pleasure today to be here at this platform because this is very, very, very close to me. Federation has become my life now and I feel that today's talk which we are going to do is going to be very interesting for everyone and it will be a lot of life learning for each one of us. I will just tell you a few things about how the Federation had come up. Federation is one of the pioneer institute in the country. It started sometime in 1997 and since then it's just going ahead and there is no look back. We have large number of women members. It's almost like a big, big number, about fifteen thousand women members all over India. We earlier used to have all the associations of the country as our members, but as the things started moving on and the local associations started becoming regional association, they all became independent, which I always feel good about because when children grow, they have to be really independent. So we call Federation of Indian Women Entrepreneurs. So far for women, it's Women Entrepreneur. It's a mother NGO for all association. And all the associations, I'm very proudly like to share with you that all associations are the outcome of this platform. So whether the association is in south, whether it is in north, whether it is in central of India, all over India, whatever name you take, whether you talk of a LEAP, you talk of a WAKE, you talk of Northeast Association, you talk of Punjab, you talk of Chennai, all the association are the product of this platform and I'm very proud to share that with each one of you. Friends, I feel that hope is a renewable option. If you run out of it at the end of the day, you get to start over in the morning. This is what Barbara King Solber, a novelist, has said and I fully agree with it because the pandemic is whatever. I mean, it cannot just slow us down. We have to keep our pace and we have to keep running and still a better, I think, speed because this has given us enough time to look into ourselves, to retrospect, in the retrospection, that what we have been doing and what we have to do. So this is a very good opportunity, I believe, and this opportunity by default has come to us and we should make full use of it. Well, today in our studio, we have with us a very renowned speaker, a very renowned guest with us. He's Ashish Vidhyati and I think, I'm sure you all know about him. Ashish Vidhyati is a prolific speaker, a motivational interventionalist, inter- internationalist, a life igniter and a national award-winning actor, has worked across eleven languages in two hundred plus films. Well, that's really great. With his igniting talks and bespoke motivational workshops, he has impacted the lives of working professionals from all over, about two hundred organizations from all over India. And he is also the co-founder of Ashish Vidhyati and associate. And today we have with us this renowned guest, Ashish. Welcome, Ashish.
Namaskar. Thank you so very much, Dr. Agarwal. Thank you so much, Deepa. Thank you very much, each one of you. All women entrepreneurs and others who have joined us today. Very, very happy to be amidst you all and we're going to engage in a very interesting conversation. And so the critical part is, all three of you are, the three of us are here. Do we, do we know what is the name of this conversation that we're going to engage in today? Who's going to tell us what is the name of the conversation? What is the title that we have given to this conversation? I'll request Divya to, if she can just run that name because that's very, very critical for us. All right? So wherever you are, okay, wherever you are at this very moment, I just want you to read this aloud to yourself. Can we read this aloud to ourselves wherever we are and it's very important? And each person who reads it aloud, I want you to just type it in into the comment section because I can read the comment section. And hello, Sheza from Maldives. Sushma Satish, hello, how are you? Usha, Dr. Sushma Satish, Gayatri Raghu, welcome. So the name of today's session, can we just run it once again, please? Is let's create what was never expected. So let's create what was never expected. And it's something which, which I find very inspiring. Yes, Himalisha, thank you. Thank you for just writing it in. I want to ask you all. I want to ask you all. If you, if you are part of a conversation, if you're part of a journey in which you're saying to yourself, let's create what was never expected. What becomes available to you? Who would like to just share a thought? What is expected? What, what is available to you, Arshu Yadav? If you're creating what was never expected, that'd be what is available to you? Who would like to share? Just share your comment. I, this is going to be, you know, this is, this is not going to be a talk. This is going to be an interaction. All right? So I really want you to know that I want to ask you, what is available to you when you are creating something which was never expected? Yes, our resources. Got it? What else? What else is available to you? Opportunity? Great. Sanjay Gupta says happiness. Got it? Rupali Gupta says your potential. Got it? My potential. Put it as my potential, my resources, opportunity for me. Got it? My happiness, my determination, Akansha Nigya. I just want you to get, let's, let's get personal here. Because I am very clear that extraordinary eyes make a phenomenal we. I'm very clear that each one of us has that extraordinariness possible. It's a family atmosphere. We are capable of creating breakthrough. Yes. It's a golden opportunity. Fantastic, Himalisha. I got it. So this is where we are beginning the conversation, is that we are creating something which was never expected of us. So we're going to surprise a few people, dear friends. Welcome to life. My belief in myself, Rainu Duvedi, got it? Caliber, will, dedication, determination, desire, Pundhumasas Deva. Dr. Sushma Satish, self-introspection, fantastic. Got it? Sheza, family atmosphere, fantastic. Now, please get this. This conversation is about you doing something which they never expected you to. Let's face it. Isn't it true? You're doing what they never expected you to do that here. Welcome to the real world. Yes, thinking out of the box. Thinking out of the box, completely out of the box. Thinking out of their box. Thinking out of this box. Thinking out of any paradigm that anyone had about us. Can we create something amazing beyond that? That's the topic of the conversation. So first, beginning first, I really, really want you to acknowledge yourself. I am acknowledging you, but I want you to acknowledge yourself for who you are. I completely get what it takes for a woman to be an entrepreneur. As much as I can, I'm, you know, I kind of understand what it takes because I know the amount of things that you need to deal with. I've seen it. I've experienced it. And I will, will share things today on things that I've seen and experienced, what professional women need to deal with. So first of all, I want you to acknowledge yourself. Saying a Shabash to yourself. Saying that, "Good job, girl." "Good job, lady." You managed quite a few things to reach where you are today. And why I'm saying is that you got to acknowledge yourself is that when you can, when you have the power, when you have the capability to acknowledge yourself, you're not waiting for the world to acknowledge you, for you to experience being acknowledged. This is, we are talking self-reliance, Atman Nirbharta. Jee-ha. You are capable of even acknowledging yourself. You're not waiting for someone to acknowledge you. I want to begin this conversation. Yes. Yes, Geeta Shikant, great gift for women is multitasking. So as I begin this conversation with you acknowledging yourself, let's also get that this is the first step. I acknowledge myself. I, I really want to take care of myself. I say, "Well done" and then I say, "What next?" So right after, "Well done" for me, the next word is, "What next?" Does it interest you to look into what next? Does it interest you? After acknowledgement, "Well done, good job, you've managed a lot of things. Now, what next?" Does that "what next" interest you? If yes, just say yes. If the "what next" interests you, just type in "yes" in the comment section. Got it, Rohini? Got it, Isiar Das? Got it? Yes, Rohini. Got it? Yes. What next? Because life is, Rohini, got it? Rupali, got it? Chweta Sundi, got it? Hala Jamal, got it? Himalisha, got it? Yes. What next is where life is happening and that's what interests me, my friends. Because all the things that we have done, got it. All the, all the achievements that we have done in the past, they are our ego trips. They're gone and dusted. What next is what life is about. Life is about the next turn that life is taking. Life is about the next turn you and I are taking in life as we maneuver our way through life. That is where life is happening. So now the nazar, the eyes are on that future, that future which we are going to be playing out in this ever-changing world. This world is continuously changing and look how it changed in the last six months. Boom! But honestly, isn't it a fact that it's always been changing? It's just another quick change. Yes. So what? Life is going on. Our responsibilities are on. Some interesting challenges have come up, but our responsibilities have just increased. They're not diminished. So I'm not going to, I don't believe in sitting and lamenting about the problems because my job is to create results for myself and for people around me because that's what world and life has wanted from me. Is it not true that the world and life wants results from you? Yes or yes? Yes or yes? Does the world and life want results from you? Yes or yes? I'm giving you a choice between yes or yes. Because that's the kind of choice life gives you. Life gives you a choice of either live it or live it. Life is very clear. We throw tantrum, "Moo, I don't want to do this." Life doesn't give you those choices. Life says, "Live it" because you are alive. Life doesn't say, "Come back when it is better." Does life say that? You know, write out is difficult. You come back later, then it is easier. Does life say that to you? It doesn't say that to me. It's not called up, any one of us. Hey, listen. Life just called up and said, "Come later in 2022 when it's going to get better, then you come and live it." Life in fact is calling us each day to create something extraordinary with this opportunity called today. And therefore I'm here with you celebrating this today where we are committed to create something extraordinary in spite of what is there, not because. Will it be interesting for you to create value in spite? In spite of this, in spite of this, in spite of this, in spite of this. Not because, you know, everything works, therefore I could do. Does it inspire you to create results in spite of all the issues? Or will you wait for issues to go away when life gives you a call? Hello? Yeah, 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 Medha. Yeah, Medha. Yeah, Rohini. Yeah, Gayatri. Yeah, Hala. Now you can come, Deepa. Dr. Rajni Agarwal, now you can come. Life is not simple. Now you can come. Life is not that way, my friends. So let's, let's get to the realities of life. The issues will never go away. So I'm, I'm sharing something, you know, it, it can be something odd, but listen into this. Consider if your life is not about solving problems. Dr. Agarwal is thinking, "What is Ashish saying? What do you mean?" Well, I'm, I'm telling you something. Consider your life is not about solving problems. Look carefully. The problems which were there years back are still there. You have moved. How will it be if you can get, if I can get, if people can get? Life is about movement, is about creating afresh. And you will notice that you have adding value rather than waiting to solve a problem before you move ahead. Life is in constant flux. Life is each day throwing up new problems. If we are about just problem solving, problem solve, 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 then we are just caught up and we are losing the, 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 the zing of life. And, and this is a very key part of this conversation because I'm very clear that you women entrepreneurs, you are in any case destroying the paradigm that anyone had, had of you. You're just completing, obliterating it. It's gone. So I'm not going to wait. I'm not going to wait for some things to change. I am going to be the change and, and you just say, "Hey, hey, listen, you guys did it in spite." That's what inspires me. So for, for me, life is about parts of us. So let's begin with that. You have many parts. Let's face it. That's how society has made all of us. We have parts. We have the part which is there in society, you know, in, in terms of relationships, in terms of how people expect us to be. There are parts of us. And I have discovered something extraordinary. I will want to share that with you. It is called, what I celebrate is something called also. I don't negate the fact that I have got parts. You know, many people talk about, we're going to juggle many things. Yeah? Do you agree? People, people say that you have to juggle a lot of things. Yes, Himalisha, life is a challenge which you face every day and solve the issue. Got it? Yes, I got it, Gayatri. That's the value system taught by parents and elders. Yes. Got it? Wherever you, whatever you stand up, you appreciate yourself, look for, fantastic, Rainu Duvedi, fantastic. I love that. Now please get it. You're also. You're also, like, I'll, I'll share with, with you. I'm also a father, also a son. I'm also a husband, also a traveler, also an actor, also communicator, also photographer, also. Look at your also. Celebrate your also. I celebrate my also. I let myself know, I let the world know that there are many parts to me. I'll not be apologetic about my also. I make time for my also. I invest in my also. I am not, I will not be a, a something which you thought I should be like because I'm just an actor. I'm just that. I'm not just that. Oh, no, I'm not. Do you also see that you are probably not only what they said you can be? Also. My friends, for me also is it in a way acknowledging my facets. Acknowledging my facets. Remember, it begins with you doing it yourself. You're going to acknowledge yourself, then also acknowledge your facets. I am acknowledging my facets. Because people look, look at each other unidimensionally. "Oh, so you're an actor. Oh, so you're an entrepreneur. Oh, so you're a wife. Oh, so you're a husband. Oh, so you're a daughter. Oh, so you are this only. I'm also that." And be in celebration of that. I really believe in celebrating. I really believe in letting people know that I'm not going to be answering your questions. I'm not going to answering your questions. Your questions, I'm going to answer that. I'm going to live my life. Think about it. Does it make any sense? Don't you have questions asked? People ask you questions and then you have to answer them. I don't answer questions. I live my life. Answering questions is like solving problems. Then you probably go solve them in, can't do, can't move till you do this, till you do this. I will move, my friend. That will also move with me. I will, I will look at wider perspectives because there is more to me also. I'm, I'm, I'm sharing with you certain paradigm, different paradigm conversations. I'm, I'm, I'm looking at you beyond the stereotype. They look at you and beyond the stereotype, you may be looking at yourself. I don't have a point to prove. Consider if you have no point to prove. Just want to check, have you been, any one of you, have you been lucky enough? Have you been lucky enough to be taunted by people? You can't do it. You shouldn't do it, huh? It's not your game, yaar. Yeh karo. Don't do it. You know what? Relax. Have you been lucky enough to be taunted by people? Dipali, fantastic. Dipali is the only lucky person who's been taunted by. Nobody, oh, okay, Gayatri also. Himali, Himali says always, "I'm lucky enough." Fantastic, superb, fantastic. Garrett, Ira Junaja says, "Good afternoon." Does it mean that, "Good afternoon, I have been taunted?" Got it. Exactly, Pundhumasas Deva. No, 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 I'll add something else, Gayatri. You know, it's not just, don't be bothered. I love that push, yaar. I love it. I love that push and I will, I will share something very, very, very interesting. See, it's, it's, the point is not, don't be bothered, don't be affected by them. Use it. I've used pushes in my life. I'm just wondering if, and I'm sure you have. Yes. Rainu Duvedi, just today I was telling my son that people will negate you, but you have to be mentally strong, absolutely. In fact, use their, use their push, use their, use their poke to push yourself. I love it. I get pushed when people say, "Oh, you can't do it." So remember, I started off as a theater actor, then it, you know, kind of started doing films in Hindi and, and growing up in Delhi, you know, people are, you know, very, very conscious about the way you look. So nobody, you know, people, somebody, you know, in college, you know, somebody standing at the, "There, you look like an actor. You must be an actor." "You should be an actor, yaar, in the sky, standing right here. Nobody's looking. You don't look like an actor." So when people taunt you, sometimes by saying some things which are not very good and sometimes by just ignoring. Do you know the taunting, how people taunt you by ignoring you? Have you felt it? I felt it. And I know that you have felt it. Being ignored. I have used that hurt, that nudge to push myself. But here is now a twist. Okay, here is now a twist. So many a times we say that, once people push you, once people taunt you, with your work, you shut their mouth. Right? That's what they say. "I'll do something, you know, and just shut their mouth." Remember, they used to taunt me. Now they don't. I've just shut their mouth. I'm offering you a different proposition. I'm just sharing this if it interests you. I have discovered that rather than shutting their mouth, just do something so good that their mouth becomes what I call the wa. Wa. My life is about generating wa. Wow. Wow. I don't answer critics. I create value which inspires me. It's all about me. It's not me angry with them and then living my life in hurt mode, trying to validate myself in front of them. It'll just be that I'm being, I'm opening myself to be continuously tested by others to be proven right. And I will share a personal anecdote, a personal tale of my dear mother, Reba Vidhyati, the late Reba Vidhyati. My mother was Bengali, but born in Rajasthan, in, in, in Ajmer. And Ma belonged to a Bengali Zamindar family. The Chatterjee's, the Chakravarti's there, yeah? And in their house, there were Zamindars. They lived in a particular way. But my mother fell in love with Kathak, a dance form from Lucknow. And she started learning it. But her grandfather, who was a Zamindar, had put no way take that her daughter of, you know, becomes, learns dance. It was, you know, to the, it was like that, "Dance girls come to our house. Our girl can't learn dance." Dance was really looked down upon. So the interesting part is that my mother really wanted to learn dance. And my, my grandmother, she supported my mother. She said, "Yeah, if you want to learn." But her father, you know, they were the joint family, he said, "No way." Now I'm going to tell you something. Please listen very carefully to this. My mother told me that she went and pleaded with her grandfather and said, "Dadu, please let me learn." And he said, "No way." And then she made a promise to him. She made a promise that she will never perform. She will learn Kathak, but she will never perform. She will only teach. Now comes the interesting part. Over the years, obviously in a few years, her grandfather expired. Ma continued. She learned, she learned from Achan Maharajji, Guru Achan Maharaj, Guru Shambhu Maharaj. And, you know, she worked at the Kathak Kendra. But she kept to her promise of never performing, but kept teaching. But what was very interesting is that she was, so at this point, the, all the top Lucknow, Ghirana exponents that you would watch performing anywhere in the world, they would have spent at least five formative years of their life, five to seven years, learning from Ma, even before they went and learned from Virju Maharajji. All right? Now, the interesting part in that was that Ma was never bitter about it. She, she kept to that promise. She never answered back to her grandparents, saying, "I'll show it." No. She, she brought it out in the excellence that she brought out in her students. And as I grew up around her, I noticed in her, her devotion to her art, but it was without the vengeance, without the vengeance to prove something. In a way, I have, I have noticed that as we achieve something to beat someone, we bring that vengeance into our family, into our life. And some, some ways, we vitiate our present because of a past. And then I say that let's create something what was never expected. One of the things that inspires me, dear friends, is that how will it be if this extraordinary set of people create graciousness in this world? Where people are not in reaction, but people are in creation. Doing unto others what they probably didn't do to you. That is something again which inspires me. Just to share with you that, you know, coming into the film line, you get, you know, you get treated in very different ways, especially, you know, when you're a young actor, you want to do something and assistant directors are needlessly mind, you know, needlessly mean to you, some of them. And some other people are also mean to you, you behave in a particular way. And as I used to watch it, you know, I used to think that, you know, when, if I one day become somebody, I'll make sure that I'm not going to behave with other youngsters the way these guys are behaving. And what's been very interesting for me is that I have learned that, what's amazing apart from being a top-notch professional, is that can I be a multifaceted human being who's adding value rather than taking away value from myself because of some anger that I have about something in the past? Are we getting a sense of what I'm sharing? Are we getting a sense? Yeah. So here is the next thing that I want to chat with you about. That our life is about managing the world. Because we are in the world. And the world is not fair. You know it, right? We can't wait for the wait, for the world to turn fair. In fact, I don't even hold it against the world. When somebody says, yeah, world is unfair, I say, yeah. Life, in fact, never told us that life is going to be fair, just to let you know. Fairness is a con- concept we humans brought in. Life never said, I mean, I give this example and giving it again. If there's a tall tree and a short tree. Okay, a tall tree, strong, tall tree and a short, weak tree, on which will lightning fall? Any idea? On which will lightning fall? Tall tree or a short tree? On which will lightning fall? Come on, who's going to tell me? Quick, who's going to tell me? On which will lightning fall? The tall tree, the tall, strong tree, or the small tree? Tell me quickly. Come on. Come on, come on, come on, come on, ah, the tall, Himali says tall one, okay, Himali goes tall. Uh, anybody going for the short one, anybody going for the, okay, everybody tall, right? Got it, fantastic. Got it, got it, got it, on the tall tree. Dumbo, it'll fall on the tall tree, guess what? The lightning fell on the short one. The lightning fell on the, the small one, huh? The tall one wasn't hit by lightning. You know why? Because lightning falls. It has no idea where it should fall, it just falls brang. Life is a bit like that, life happens brang. Life happens brang. It doesn't say it should happen here or there, no, that is wrong, no, life happens dum. Covid nineties happened hum. Good people, bad people, indifferent people, all got caught. Life is like that. We will go into think, look, yaar, I did so much good and such bad has happened. Life is fair. Life go brang. Please get it, my friends. Don't try to argue with life. Life doesn't listen to arguments. You know what I equate life with? I'll give you an example. If you really think fairness, unfairness, uh, any one of you crossing streets in India, you all, got a few of you from India, right? Oh, Vanita is from Ireland, all right. So Vanita, you'll have to understand this, okay, slightly difficult one for you, but just, I'll just tell you. So in India, we don't cross streets. We survive streets. We survive crossing the road, huh? Oh, thank God, we made it, okay? We just, we just survive it, all right? Really, it's very difficult. Now, there are a lot of people going on the wrong side also, you know, like somebody, so typically you would say left, right, sorry, right, left, right, and then cross. In India, we don't do that. We go right, left, right, left, right, left, we keep looking right, left till that point we survive and reach the other side. The reason is that the truck or the bus or the scooter can come from any side. You don't sit and say, listen, you should not have come, you just make sure that you're not hit by it. I don't know whether it's making any sense, but life is a bit like that, my friend. It is my responsibility to maneuver my way through life. I cannot be at the mercy of life and then complain about it. Life is completely about what you and I negotiate with it. In life, you don't get what you deserve, dear friends. In life, you only get what you negotiate with. A negotiation is not just about money. Negotiator is that how do you manage to live the life that you wish to live in spite of what is happening around? How are you with me if I say that life is all about, not about what I deserve, but about what I managed to negotiate? Because life is very clearly like that, my friends. Just imagine the number of things that you have to deal with each day before you get set out to work, that's negotiation. Hey, listen, can I do this later? Hey, can I, can I do this right now? Can I come back and do this with you? That is negotiation. And it's terrible if negotiations break down. The relationship between a husband and a wife, a relationship between a father and a son, a son and a sister, uh, you know, a, a person and the educational system and, and, uh, you and I and Covid, we are negotiating, we are just maneuvering, we are just, hmm, we are doing, doing this. We are somehow maneuvering through life. Welcome to life. So for me, life is an opportunity to, to negotiate in such a way that people get that I'm not only playing for my winning. A key part of negotiation is leaving something on the table. Are you ready to leave something on the table as you progress through life? A key part, a very important part of life. How much are you willing to let go? This is the, this is the absolute opposite of, come on, you're going to win each time, you're going to win, 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 win. If you try and win each time, you'll be a major loser, people will desert you. People will desert you. I know Hindu. You know, the same thing, because, because we want to hold on to so many things, I don't want to hold on to so many things, it's, you know, it's painful, just try and do this. Just clench your fist hard, just clench your fist very, very hard, wherever you're sitting, just clench it hard. All of you, just clench it hard, really hard, really hard, really hard. It'll leave a mark on you, my friend. The world doesn't care. It's tiring, it's just holding on to it, it's gone, it's gone. Keep it light, my friends. It's not about what they say, you're, whether you're winning or not. It's your ability to let go and, and move ahead. In negotiation, when something's not working out, you move on, you move ahead, you don't try and win this one and then win this one. I'm not going to move till I win this, life is about keep moving. The person you're talking to has lost many, many negotiations from very early in my life. Right at the beginning, you know, I just to let you know, I, there, there used to be a serial years back, I don't know, Dr. Agarwal would remember, there used to be a first serial called Humlog. Does anyone remember a serial called Humlog? Yeah, Dr. Agarwal says, yes, she does, or even Deepa says, yes, fantastic, Humlog. Humlog used to be the first serial which used to be made in Delhi and they used to shoot it at Himachal Bhavan. And so we used to do theater there, I was part of a group called Sambhav. And we, we used to do theater and, and Mr. Pikumar Vasudeva was the director of Humlog. And you know, the people from Humlog, they used to come and watch our plays and you know, it used to feel very great. And then one day I was told that I got a role. All right, I got a role in Humlog, I was so thrilled, I was from, from here to moon. And I'll tell you what I did, how happy I was, I, I got the role of a, you know, a Bengali police inspector, I got that role, I was like, yay! And I, I was in college that time, okay, this is before national school drama, I was in college, Hindu college studying history, got the role in Humlog, yes! Learned the lines, went to, went to a, you know, friend's mother, Amitabh Majumdar, my friend's mother, I said, Kakyama Dhamake, please shake out. And she, she taught me how to, you know, speak with the Stai B Banglaks in the Hindi, I did that. And three days before the shoot, they, they, and, and you know, another thing that I did? There were three filmmakers whom I really looked up to, one was Ranalsen, Satyajit Ray and Tapan Sinha, all Bengali filmmakers, you know, and I send them letters. I typed in on my father's, uh, this thing, no laptop, huh? Typewriter. Got their addresses and, and mailed them, you know, mailed them, really mailed them, like postbox mailed them. Three letters saying that my name is Ashish Vidyarthi, you have never heard of me, I'm an actor who lives in Delhi. I am appearing in the da-da-da, that episode of Humlog, I will be in that scene, this is the name of my character, please watch it. All right, all this happened. Three days before the shooting, I go there, somehow for some reason, they are not letting me into the office. You know, at Himachal, what, what happened? And suddenly somebody came out and said, uh, Ashish, you're not doing that role. I said, what are you saying? He said, no, you, you're not doing it, actually, you know, we promised it to somebody, that person has come back. I said, what do you mean promise? No, this, this role was given to me. So then the dad is, he kind of, like clearly told me, he said, listen, I had promised it to a, you know, another person in, in, in Durdharshan. And you know, his son was promised the role and that time he was not free, but now he says he can do it. Just to tell you, my friends, I was beyond heartbroken. I told him, I said, please let me once read it along with him, you choose the better one, you choose it. I'm not saying that you give it, but just let me try, he said, no, 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 I know you're better. But you know, you understand, Ashish, you understand. Ashish didn't understand, Ashish cried. I wept all the way to Mrs. Sushma Seeth's house. She was my teacher, my guru, she, I went down to her and I wept and she told me something amazing. You know, teachers tell you something amazing, they sound very unfair, but they, they teach you about life. Sushma ma'am said, Ashish, he's given it to his friend's son. You know, if I get something, I'll give it to you because you're very, very close to me. That's how life is. In life, people favor people. I was heartbroken, but I got that life isn't exactly fair. And I got that my job is not to wait for it to turn fair. I got that my job is to create results in spite of what is there. I, I really want you to get this. I got that. If I keep commenting and saying that life is unfair, I may get some other people who'll say, yeah, yeah, Ashish, poor you. Won't solve any issues for me. Are you getting a sense of what I'm sharing? Dear friends, I know that you have gone through unfairness. You have experienced unfairness in ways beyond that even I can ever imagine. I'm just telling you, never, ever give yourself the right to look at yourself as a poor victim. It's the worst gift that we can give to ourselves. This world needs victors. Victors are not people who are waiting for right times. Victors are people who move during pain, during tiredness. Even during periods when people have given up on them, thinking that they are done and out. I have a question to ask you, each one of you. Does it inspire you to be a victor? If yes. Got it, Pradeep Manotra. Who else is going to say yes? Does it inspire you to be a victor? Ira Junaja got it. Yes, Himali, yes, Munalika, yes, Shiza. Yes, Himali. Ashu got it. Avila Sha got it. Turn everything into your victory, dear friends. Turn everything around you into your victory, that's the name of the game. Life is about you creating and discovering that I will create in ways beyond what you ever expected. You wanted me to be angry? Got it, I'm not angry, but I have created something amazing. You never expected this of me, right? Got it. But I'm not answering you, I'm just creating something afresh. Life is not about shutting their mouth, life is about leaving them, wow. Life is about continuously learning, that's the name of my game, that's my name also, Ashish Vidyarthi. It's about continuously learning, learning, developing yourself. They, I, I, I don't know eight or eleven languages that I work in, but it didn't stop me from working across languages. I have to learn, I have to go beyond all my comforts. You know, things that I'm comfortable in Hindi, I know the language helps me, no, it doesn't work. Life is calling me beyond that. Life is calling me saying that I will, I will break your stereotype of me. That's why six years back, I also got into, you know, speaking to organizations, reaching out to people like you, making a difference in some other way, other than just acting. I'm now also an actor, also a motivational speaker, also a person who does workshops, just to let you know. I mean, just this weekend, I mean, like probably eighteenth, we are doing a phenomenal workshop, it's called the Zone Workshop, it is happening on Book My Show. All right, it's, 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 it's a, it's a workshop where we have done, it's a forty-five minute to one hour workshop. Where we are creating something that what will it take from each one of us, that we are somewhere here? This is where we want to achieve and what we want to reach, but there are things on the way, how do we deal with that? Are we dealing for everything to die out and to be fine before we move or can we do something? So it's a powerful workshop. So what I'm doing is that I am finding different ways to add value, so you guys can check this out. It's on the eighteenth of September on Book My Show. It's called the Zone Workshop. Now, your ability, now let's just come back to it, your ability to create results is your strength. And that's why I say replace lament with action. I'm upset, I'm angry, I'm irritated. Complaints don't take me any place. I, I've learned something amazing from, from my mother-in-law. Shakundla Barwa, the great Shakundla Barwa, she's an actor, leading actor in, in, in Bengal. Also an actor, also a poetess, also the most, I, I call her the world's second best chef. Amazing. And a poetess. And full of energy. And you know, she teaches me so many brilliant things each time that I interact with her. She's taught me through her life that you, you can make mistakes and then become bigger than you ever were before. She recognized herself, her facets, facets to herself and she has developed in, in, in ways which are far beyond we ever expected. And each time I look at her, I say that she doesn't look like, uh, she used to be an actor, no. She's one of the first, I mean, just to let you know, when Covid crisis struck and her shooting started, she called up, she called us up and she said, you know what? I have to begin shootings, I will begin shootings, I will take care and I will begin. And even before I started shooting, she was shooting in Kolkata. And she's got quite a few comorbid situations, conditions. She's brave, my friend. She's brave and she's, she's dealt with things in her life. But not once do I see at this stage of her life will she be in lament. And what I learned from her, which I take away, which I really want to share this with you as we come to the, towards the end of our interaction and then we'll have question, answer, is gratefulness. She's, she embodies gratefulness for me. She embodies gratefulness for me and as, as I take that on in my life, being grateful for what I have, then I give that extra bit each day to my work. In fact, I call that zarasaur. Zarasaur. Zarasaur means a little bit more, after giving my best, I give a little bit more because I'm privileged that I'm alive, that I've got this opportunity. It's my opportunity to make a difference, it's my opportunity to give a great shot, it's an opportunity to spend some fantastic time with some friends. It's that moment in my life which I'll make so special that people will say, wow. I will experience wow. My friends, zarasaur is something which I'm inviting each one of us to do, that whatever be your trade, whatever be your profession, whatever you are looking at, whatever is dear to you, give that extra bit more than that was ever expected of you. That's what I call the privilege of life, the privilege of doing. That's what I call the privilege of life, the privilege of doing something more. And as you do that, as you create something, that add that something extra, I promise you one thing. You're not just doing your work, you're inspiring many more people to do more. That's how I see you. That's when Dr. Agarwal spoke to me about you all. That's what I got. You people are creating value far beyond your value. People are looking up at you. They're saying, wow, she did it. I can too. That's the game. When you see that as you are walking, as you are talking, as you are working, people are looking up to you. Are they judging you? Of course they are. Life can never be without judgment. Do you like to be judged? Any one of you likes to be judged? Does any one of you like to be judged? Tell me honestly. Tell me who's gonna honestly answer. Does anybody like to be judged? Come on, come on. Hey, liar, liar. Himali Shah is the only truthful, but nobody likes being judged. Nobody likes to be judged. Yeah, got it. Tic-tac. Even says, no, Rohini Agarwal says, no. But guess what? If you're playing big, you will be judged. Can I give you an example? As all of you are sitting, wherever you are sitting, right now you are, you are judging me. Dr. Agarwal, correct or wrong, Deepa, am I right or not? Everybody's judging. Welcome to life. If you stand out, people will judge you. For me, it's a privilege. Because when you are judging me, your eyes, your ears, everything is concentrating on me. I will make the most of this opportunity, my friend. I will make such a phenomenal, this spirit with you that you'll never, ever forgive me. You'll never, ever forget what I am sharing with you. This is my privilege. Thank you for judging me. Are you getting a sense of what I'm sharing? When people judge you, you have their attention. Make the most of it. Make the most of it. Don't ask people to not judge you. Be in a place that they judge you. They look up at you, you think you can do it? Don't do anything, just do it. So, one of the key parts as I complete this, I really want us to get. You know, this line when we say, let's create what was never expected. As a final part, I want to leave you with this one thought. And that is one thought which has gone into our creation of the Zone Workshop also. The thought that went in for me is that enough time we think that, you know, what will, what if I surprise them? What if I surprise them? Alright, what, what if I surprise, you know, I surprise her, I surprise them, I surprise him. You know what inspires me? How will it be if you can surprise yourself? Surprise yourself. Pick on things that you never thought you could. Surprise yourself. You know, today I looked up on LinkedIn, I found this beautiful piece. It was, it was a, it was a British athlete. And there was a, she ran a ten point two one, it was a record time. And she finishes her run and everybody behind her is clapping, her co-athletes are clapping. And she just turns back, she just turns back like this. And she looks at the scorecard and it has given that world record time. And then she can't believe it. My friends, I know for a fact that she would have spent hours and days and months and years practicing for that moment. But she managed to surprise herself. She had that dream, but that dream looked beyond possible. She was trying for it, but it was beyond possible. I'm inviting you to create that for yourself. For you to surprise yourself so that one day you say that I never thought I could. How will it be for you if you can achieve things that you never thought you could? In fact, that is one of the reasons that I created the Zone Workshop. Is because for a whole lot of us, we really want to do a lot of things, but we are stopped. We are stopped by voices, outside voices, and then we start echoing those same voices ourselves. Ends up saying that I can't do it. I can't do it. And what I've done in this own workshop is actually used the tenets that I have used in my life and brought it out for people to create that zone in which you can silence the world and to go and surprise yourself. So I'm inviting you definitely kind of check it out on Book My Show, the Zone Workshop. And as I complete today, I am inviting you to one very interesting thing. Can we have the title of our workshop today, our talk today? Let's create what was never expected. I want you to reword it for yourself. Let me create what I never expected. Can you all write this down? Can you all write this down? Let me create what I never expected. Divya, can we also write this down? Yes, you all can join the workshop on Book My Show. You can look up the Zone Workshop. It's on this eighteenth of September. Can we just write it down? Can we write it down, Divya? Can we have it here? Let me create what I never expected. WTW Enterprises, Ashu Yadav got it. Let me create what I never expected. This is the game that I'm leaving you with. I'm leaving you with the possibility of surprising yourself. The game that I'm inviting you to, forget about the word here, that you're dealing with, you will deal with. Play a game in which you surprise yourself, create stuff which you never imagined you could. I do look forward to meeting. Yeah, fantastic, fantastic. That's, that's my amazing young colleague, Divya, who's kind of, let me create what I never expected. I never expected me to say this. Divya never expected me to say that, but she has kind of updated it. So, over to your questions. Deepa, Dr. Agarwal, I'm open to your questions. Yes, love it. Shekma Madhagi, let me create what I never expected. Got it. Fantastic. So, Deepa.
Yeah, thank you very much, Ashish. It was really, really invigorating and you know, your empathy and your emotion towards people make you really involved with everyone, with each and every person. I mean, I could see the emotions coming back on you when you were talking about those incidents, what happened in the past or what happened with the people. It is really, really excellent. Now, my question to you is that you got into acting. Were you interested from the beginning or you decided it later on?
I was deeply passionate about acting. I still am very deeply passionate. So, acting is something which I love to do. And I also discovered that I love to actually, you know, interact with people. So, acting gave me that opportunity. Acting gave me the opportunity to create roles. But more importantly, acting gave me the opportunity to meet a lot of people, observe a lot of them and imbibe a lot of things from them into my life.
And you decided to become a motivational speaker later on or?
So again, it was, yeah, about, about six years back. So I'd done about two hundred plus films across eleven languages. And Dr. Agarwal, how life is, that life, you know, comes up in very, very different facets. And I got that, you know, I love acting and I also, I love to do more things with my life. I also discovered that it all begins with yourself, alright? It never starts there. It begins with here. An upset begins with here. Happiness begins with here. So for me, I did see myself going through a lot of ups and downs, emotional ups and downs. And I said that, can I look after myself? And I started by doing that. And then I said that, how will it be if I can share that with others? Because a lot of us, Dr. Agarwal, we achieve a lot, but we do not acknowledge ourselves. You know, we, we are not kind enough to acknowledge ourselves. We, we keep beating ourselves. So what I share with people is how will it be if you can be kind to yourself and be amazing with the world? And that's what we do at Avid Minor. So people can visit our website also, avidminor.com and we do, we are, we are looking at one thing. We are looking at people really getting that there is one life, right? One life. And then in this one life, can we create something amazing? Or say that, no, no, up till my life is over, now we have to either wait for kids or the grandchildren to do something. I'm fifty-five and I'm hungry and I'm wanting to create something extraordinary in this life. Therefore, we think of, you know, amazing things to do. Okay, Rupali Gupta has asked a question. I would love to take that. What do you, okay, I like this question. What do you do to maintain the perfect work-life balance? Alright? So Rupali, let me share a few things. There are certain myths about it. There is nothing called work in life. If you look at it, this is life. In life, we are doing this and we are alive, we are doing this. It's all inside of life. So are you adding value to your life or not is the question? Look, if you say, like a lot of people say, in Bombay, we, I hate travel, just the traffic is killing. We got five months of no traffic. It was more killing than ever. So I keep sharing, you know, we know, be careful for what you want, you may get it. Alright, so someone up there says, you don't like traffic? You don't like to travel? Work from home. You want, I can't, I want to spend time at home. So the question what you have discovered is that anything in excess, we do not like. We can't handle them. It's not worth it. Anything in excess. And so therefore it is, are you adding value to yourself? And you can ask that question. If you're not, alter something about it. And if you cannot alter yourself, negotiate with others and make, make it workable. So life is all about negotiation. Negotiating with yourself, saying that, hey, listen, right now I need to do this, not that, okay? Or with others, hey, listen, can I do this? Hey, this is what, what can we do for you? What, what is workable? So it is, it is part of an ongoing negotiation that you have to do with life. You have to grow and you have to also nurture, alright? So it's that mix of growing, nurturing, developing, reaching up, giving pain to yourself to grow to that extra bit and then also to take, you know, relax. That is how you negotiate. That's how each one of our lives is different. So do not look at anybody else's life and try and make your life like that person's life. That person's life is not like any other person's life. So find your own sweet somethings and maneuver your way through it, alright? Yeah.
Ashishi, I'd like to ask you a question.
Please.
Yes, so thank you so much for such a warm and energetic session. There's one thing that I can talk about your workshop that it was very energetic for all of us, the women entrepreneurs. We loved it. And before I ask my question, four things that we have learned as women entrepreneurs. One, let's go, leave something on the table. Two, don't be a victim. Yeah, three, surprise yourself, but you know, surprise others. That's also another segment. And create something. That's what you said. Create something wonderful. Before I ask my question, one thing that I see, even in Bollywood and the extensive and the beautiful career that you've had, how do you stay relentlessly in spite of setbacks? So you do get setbacks in life. You do well and then you fall down. You do well. How do you stay relentlessly and do extensively that in spite of the setbacks?
So, you know, just look at this, you know, in fact, I started the thing with it. Life is about in spite, not because. It's part of life, my friend. You don't want to have setbacks. Sit at home and lie down. Ah, I promise you, very few setbacks. Don't take on games, huh? What do you say, Dr. Agarwal? You'll never fail. Never play cricket. Remember, I created the ground behind me, okay? This is a player's game, my friend. You don't play, you'll never fall. But one of the things that you get is that, I'm completely okay with falling. That's when you do something in life. You'll have to be able to deal with people's poo-poo. So therefore, and it's again, I'm just coming back to the Zone Workshop. In the Zone Workshop, I'm going to actually let people know what is it that you are saying about defeat? What is it that you are saying about small and big? Because that runs our head. It runs our head. You know, it continuously runs our head. Have I become small? Is anybody dominating me? Am I become smaller? Have I taken a back step? Have I taken, what, yeah? In the, in the, in the game of life, there are many things. And that's something which I'm very passionate about because you know, each one of us are so much in judgment of ourselves. Then we start getting in judgment of others. I'll say, I don't think Geeta should have done this. I wondered why Dr. Agarwal, I'm not bitching about it, but I'm just wondering why is Dr. Agarwal doing this? Hello? Stop talking, discussing others. First of all, stop discussing yourself. I have deep respect for people who work hard, deep respect, and I keep it at that. And so, so I'm really passionate about that, that we go to, how are we looking at what we call a success and what we call as failure? But something is, yeah.
Can I have, I have one, I mean, I'm very inquisitive about it, so I want to ask you.
Please.
What is the, you find any difference between entrepreneurship and acting or you think they are similar?
Well, we are all, we are all self-made. We, we, we kind of all, you know, we are, we are doing our job on a daily basis. We are self-employed.
Yeah.
So I kind of, I have deep respect for people who are self-employed. We generate, we generate, you know, we generate our need. There is no entitlement in it. Each day you go out and work, you look for work. Once you do, once you do your work, you work so hard in a day. I mean, I have something, I will share this with you. I'm sharing parts of the workshop also which are happening. In fact, why don't we put a link to the workshop if somebody wants to go? We can also see a link on that in the comments, Divya. So one of the things that I see it as that when you have a very hardworking day, okay? Couple of points that I make, and a very hard, I call it a good tired day. Again, that's, that's something which entrepreneurs need to do. On a good tired day, very good tired, when I'm dog tired, I'm very happy that A, I've done something which I'd never done before. I have done something today which I'd never done before. That's a good tired day for me. Secondly, I've learned something amazing out of a mistake today. That's the second part of me, good tired day. I really so pushed the envelope that I made a mistake also. Okay, I learned something from it. Point number three. Through the day, with my work, I have created one friend of my work. I've worked hard and I've created one friend of my work. Alright, and the final part, I'm so tired that after a good night's sleep, I will wake up excited to create something extraordinary tomorrow morning.
Beautiful.
That for me is beyond brother.
Very nice.
Very nice.
But I feel acting is much more difficult than entrepreneurship. Because as an entrepreneur, we create a product which is a size, which has a shape, which has a name. But as an actor, you're every time different. All emotions are different and it is so difficult. I believe that acting is an entrepreneurship in itself, but it's a very, very, very difficult entrepreneurship because there, your insight comes out. When you take out your insight and then you have the outer world as well and having a synchronization amongst the two is the most difficult part.
I loved one question. I want to take this question. Ma'am, as a final question, may I take this question from Sanjay Goyal? I think he's find, interesting question which could be of value to everyone. So he says, there's a phenomena of shedding extra baggage also means shedding unsuccessful moments. So I want to share with So I want to share with you all, we are not without. I'm not without. None of you is without. We are not without the successful, horrible, stupid, unsuccessful, boring moments. We are a net total and more of that. So I own each moment of my life, I don't disown any one of those moments. So traveling without baggage, traveling light, I'll tell you what that is, is not carrying it into the next moment. You know, for example, today as I'm here, I may have done countless workshops. I may have spoken to countless hundreds and thousands of people. This, this talk matters to me. All right? I have come here to deliver. Each day for each one of us is an opportunity to deliver afresh. We don't sit on our past, you know, the things that we have achieved. We create afresh. That for me is traveling light. I'm not sitting here and talking basis, the reputation that I had created till even 15 minutes back. Even in the last three minutes, I will create something extraordinary for you. That is traveling light. Where you do not sit on your past laurels and you are continuously creating afresh. All right? So I will now need to take leave because, you know what? Can I tell you another exciting thing for me? Today was a jam-packed day, I had some fantastic things, you know? And also, it'll also give you an idea, so even at this age, I, you know, I speak to organizations and I speak to groups of people and I work in firms and I work across languages and work in OTTs. And just to let you know, even in this period, I give auditions. So this morning, there were, a very interesting role has come up and they said, so would you audition? I said, of course I will audition. And my wife, Pilu, she was kind enough to sit with me and she shot. So my first call today was at 7:00 AM with a banker. And we, my first call was very early before that, because I wake up very early. So I was walking and, you know, chatting and sending recordings of my workshop that we are curating. 7:00 AM I had the Bandhan Bank curation. And then from 8:00 to 10:00, Pilu and I, we were recording my audition. The point that I want to make is that, never shy away from asking for work. Never shy away. It's a privilege, it's a privilege that you have to ask for work. So I let people know that I add value, all right? I will audition for that. I'll, in fact, I have reached out with, to you people today, that we are doing this amazing workshop called the Zone Workshop. I'm reaching out to you. Come, enjoy this workshop, take some value for yourself, all right? So never, ever shy away from what your work is. Don't feel put off by people who say, oh, lo, he's asking for work, there's no problem. If you're good, then you can ask for work. If you're not, then you will hide behind it, all right? So on this government note, because right after this today, just in about an hour's time, I will go live again. I'm interviewing somebody very interesting, Mr. Ramke, it's a show called The Two of Us. And you can join us again on YouTube or LinkedIn, wherever. It's a very interesting show where we talk about talking zindagi, sipping coffee, okay? Well, sipping life, talking zindagi, all right? So I'll have to go into that. So I want to thank you, Dr. Agarwal, for, you know, the privilege of, you gave me this privilege of interacting with this extraordinary set of people, of women entrepreneurs, I want to thank Deepa. I want to thank my extraordinary team at Avid Miner, I want to thank my colleague Ajay Mahajan for making sure that I was here at the event, I did it. I want to thank my young colleague Divya Sane, who helped me curate this conversation. And she's been managing all the technical things at here and let me also surprise her. I just brought her on, she didn't realize, but so she's the person who's kind of, you know, curated this and she's been managing all the technical things that, you know, doing all the tech rehearsals with Dr. Agarwal, Deepa and everybody. So I want to thank you, Divya, for that. I want to thank each one of you for having made time, invested in yourself and being here for this event. We would love to hear your feedback and look forward to meeting you all at some point in the journey. And over to you.
Thank you very much, Ashish, for being with us. It was really wonderful, highly inspiring talk. And we are taking lot many things with us, each one of us, I'm sure, having some beautiful points with them and they are all going to follow those probably. I would like to thank you all, my friends who have joined from Sri Lanka, from Nepal, from Maldives, from Ireland, from Bahrain and from other countries.
Wow, wow, wow.
Bangladesh, yes. And all other friends from all over India, from Maharashtra, from other places. I would like to really thank my team, my office team, Nupur and Gayatri, of course. And I would also like to thank Ajay for bringing us together. And thank you, dear Divya, you have been really trying to talk to us and do the trials since yesterday and today morning. And thank you very much once again, Ashish. This has been really wonderful and I had requested you and I'm going to write you a letter for being a part of us for our next journey. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you everyone, have a great evening, stay bright.
Yeah.
Thank you, Deepa, thank you. All of you have an amazing, amazing evening, stay bright and stay amazing, all right?